Our candidates that have decided to attend to ask us questions of staff and to maybe get to know us a little bit better. Met a couple for the first time and some I've known for quite some time. A couple of things that you should know about today's event is that we won't answer anything other than a factual question. So if you ask us, how many X do you have? We'll answer that question, but if you ask us, why do you only have X? We won't answer that question. We're here for. And at the very end, we'll do one last Q and A for you if you have any, any questions. So I'd like to ask actually the candidates to just introduce themselves. Some of us, it's first time as staff, so I know Tom, Tom, will you just stand up, say who you are?
My name is Tom Klein.
Okay, Jan.
Jan Berkski, Chairman.
Thank you.
Hello, Mr. Dean.
Okay, thank you for doing that. And then the last piece is that we will not allow questions from the public. This is not a forum, this is not a Q and A, this is not real, the candidate session. This is just really a nice chance for us to get to know you a little bit as staff and for you to get to know us a little bit. So with that, we'll kick off, we have a lot of slides to get through, but we're going to go kind of fast and then we'll have plenty of time for Q and A. So we've already talked a little about the purpose, city hall council relationship, seven council members hearing your voice, six and a mayor all have one vote. And but council sets policy at a very high level. If you've seen the deliberations and things like that, we as staff are charged to get the work done and figure out work plans. And so it's important that we have a close relationship with our council. We have a good relationship with our council because we work so close together on so many issues and so many things that are so important to this community. I think I can speak honestly and say we have a great staff culture. We like our council, I think they like us, it seems like it, and, and we've gotten a lot of success. That's how I measure the relationship is how much stuff have we gotten done? How many problems have we solved? How good have we been about taking care of some of the things that pop up? Global pandemic is one, you know, I'm sure you've heard about it. You know, things that we never anticipated, you know, potholes, things like that are more in our line. But council really got challenged by COVID, we got challenged as COVID and we worked really hard together as the staff and the electeds to, to, to address that. And I think, I think both sides did really well, so that's, that's me. COVID-19 financial impacts, not only did we have a global pandemic, we had a major drop in our revenues as a city and we can't do anything without money. And so we had to deal with that. And then going forward, we had to work with council to talk about how we can make sure we're being fiscally responsible going forward. We are, you know, still working through COVID. Now we have some economic challenges with a potential recession, inflation. And so there's always new things to work on and new problems, but also some new opportunities. And we try to, we try to keep our council apprised of all those. Some of the fun stuff that is really exciting to do is build. Anybody who works in public service loves to build stuff, councils love to build stuff. And so we have focused a lot on economic development with our three initiatives, the Gourmet Alley, the 536 acres, and then the sports park. Kind of the fun stuff to build. Some of the things that we're very much dealing with is the drought and wildfires. It's, I don't know how many consecutive days we've had 100 degrees. It's a little warm in here, it's really hot out there. And so that puts a lot of stress on our residents, our community, our public safety, our public works, public works folks. Again, another challenge, but one that we were ready for and we were dealing with. Public safety, of course, most of our general fund budget goes to fire and police, public safety. So that's always been a high priority and that'll not go away. But the last couple of years have really brought to light some of other issues we had, which we call quality of life. And engaging our unhoused and working with service providers. So COVID really exposed a lot of flaws in the system, a lot of areas where people weren't getting the assistance they needed. And we're working really hard to try to see where we can do better and, and help that part of our population as well. Operational challenges, these are not specific to Gori. If you talk to anybody in any other city or you run a business or you, you know, you just read the paper. There is reduced staff and high turnover in local government and any business. Labor is a real challenge for us right now. And some of the things we'd like to do or some of the programs we'd like to offer, we just can't find people to work those jobs. And so that's a challenge for every entity. Inflation, supply chains, product delays, inflation is really hitting us pretty hard. We, we buy a lot of goods and services and, and now we wait a lot longer to get those things than we used to. Something that would take you a week or two is now taking you several months and that impacts all of our operations. Unfunded liabilities, you know, we have streets, infrastructure. We also have pensions, things like that, and we've, we've worked on those challenges. Those have been challenges for years and they're going to continue to be challenges. I don't think we're going to solve those, but we, we continue to work with our council and bring those up and, and address those. Infrastructure investments, the city has spent a lot of money on infrastructure, streets, roads. You're seeing some of that work, water, wastewater, the wastewater plant, lots of money going in to kind of rebuild what was built 40, 50, 60, 70 years ago. And then as always, we're looking at long-term planning, looking for what the next generation can do. You know, once most of us are on and gone and moved on, always looking to see what we can do to get the next generation ready to go. And then increasing challenges around the unhoused population. All right, but every challenge has an opportunity and there's new ways of doing business. And that's one thing that we really learned from COVID-19. We've certainly gone more digital, people don't have to come in to get certain things like they did before. But with that, residents change their expectations. They, they, they put that application in or that permit or whatever, that night, they want it back in the morning. And that's fine, but you know, we, we are getting used to that. We used to be, I would say, an operation that relied a lot of in-person interaction from our residents to come and pay their water bill, come in to do this. We don't see them as much anymore, that's a big impact of COVID. And so we've adjusted how we do some things. And, and then investment in electronic and technology. We have replaced the majority of our high-level technology equipment and, and, you know, and software. And in order to adjust to that resident and customer expectations. Lots of economic development opportunities, you're seeing them around town that will produce other economic development opportunities as well. And then financial sustainability, we have learned a lot about grant writing and we've been extremely successful. And I think going forward, we're going to be seeing even more good results of getting some of this money from the federal and state government. And then just the continuing to find who we are as an organization today and tomorrow and, and changing with our residents as well. All right, so I'm going to do a few of these sections, not because I want to talk all night, but because we, we have Rochelle Bedell, who's our community and engagement manager. She's helping with the online portion. Our finance director had a family conflict tonight, so I'm going to do their parts and then you're going to hear from other people. So I don't lose my voice and you, you can hear somebody else. But let's talk about what really some of the things that we spend a lot of time talking about at the, the council level, and that's the city's budget. We're a pretty large corporation, if you look at it from just a basic, you know, financial, we're, all of our funds are about $155 million. We have about $500 million in assets. And so of that, the general fund, if you're not familiar with government accounting, the general fund is about the only fund that council has the discretion to use on whatever they want. You can use all of that on one program or certain pieces of it. And that's what really we spend a lot of our talk about other funds like water and wastewater and things like that. We have to spend the revenues on that, so it's not as, it's not as, there's not as much, you know, discretion, there's no discretion in fact. And we are currently in the half cycle of the half part of a two-year budget cycle. So we've been through one year, we've already started the second year on July 1st. And so December, January, when we have our new council, we'll start the next two-year budget cycle and we'll start working with council about priorities, programs. What do they want to do with the city's money? And, you know, having those discussions with the public as well. So the new council that does get seated will jump right in after the election and certification of the election. And we'll start working on the next two-year budget cycle. Any questions on the budget, any questions so far? Kind of just, yes?
You were talking about the unfunded liabilities. You were saying that, you know, it doesn't look like that's ever going to be solved. What does that look like from, you know, why is it so difficult to catch up?
Okay, I'll repeat the question. The question was about unfunded liabilities and the amount and that I stated that will never really, that won't go away and why is it so difficult to catch up? One of the reasons that it's difficult to catch up is because the numbers are so large. For our pensions alone, it's about $90 million in liabilities. And so CalPERS decides over time how much of that we're going to pay. You could pay that 90 million off tomorrow and if something happens in the stock market or in things like that, the unfunded liability could just grow in one day. So it's a moving target, it's one that very few cities are able to, to address at the current time. So it's basically financed over time. And so I would never say we have unfunded liabilities addressed because I never know what's going to happen with the financial markets in the next year or two. Thank you. So as part of the two-year budget process, council sets goals. And when we go through that process with council, we as staff then develop programs and, and work plan items to help council achieve those goals. And so I'll give you an example of a program or project that we've done under each goal, so you get a sense of how we link that. So council will say, we want you to develop a financially resilient organization that relies on local revenues and resources. And so one of the things that we do to address that, and we tell council that, is that we've increased, increased our grant program. We, we don't want to rely so much on hoping that the federal government or that the state government will pay for things that maybe they used to. So we're active in getting grants and we're also active in ensuring that our current businesses that provide sales tax, hotel tax, things like that, have the best opportunity to succeed. So that's how we can make sure that we're, we're taking care of our finances. Maintain and improve city infrastructure, including street facilities and incorporates green energy practices. Part of that goal, council's allocated several million dollars of the general fund itself to pay for street repairs, parking lots, infrastructure issues that would normally be handled from other revenues or from other funding sources. And so Gori has taken that responsibility on theirselves and used that discretionary money that I talked to you about just a minute ago. Promote economic development activities that create opportunities for quality employment and increase the city's tax base. This is, one example of that would be Gourmet Alley, which the city did receive a grant for. The sports park, which the city has been in negotiations with San Jose Sharks. And then the 536 acres out at Hecker Pass. So all, again, building, you know, economic development that we hope will provide some, you know, stimulation to our local economy. And also, you know, providing a good quality of life for all of our residents. Ensure neighborhood equity from city services, including public safety, streets, parks and recreation. We look at all of our areas of town regardless of the income level, regardless of what, you know, revenues we generate from that area. And we, we make sure that we have things in place. For example, our street program is based entirely, almost entirely on technical data. So if somebody says you don't put enough money into this side of town, but you put too much money this side, it's actually driven by the quality of that street. And so that's one way we ensure that, you know, different parts of the city receive, you know, the, the correct amount of attention according to the, the quality of the pavement. And that, oh, hold on, and promote the availability of safe, affordable housing for all Gori residents. Council has adopted several endorsed policies and programs to, you know, to increase affordable housing. And as you'll see coming up, Measure A, which is a bond in the county, is, will be on the next city council agenda item to support an MOU with the county to develop approximately $20 million, 57-unit housing. That's, that's how councils can support their goals of, you know, increasing the, the housing allotments. Any questions, any questions on the goals? Okay, so let's go through the first department, which is really my department and its administration. It's a, it's a hodgepodge of different things and I'll go pretty quick and just explain to you what, what that entails. This is the city, this is the citywide org chart, as you can see, the city council's at the top. Then there's me and then the city attorney. And then there's a dotted line from the city council down to the city clerk. The city council actually appoints the city clerk and, and my position provides administrative day-to-day oversight of the city clerk. But elections official items, things like that are independent of me. And, and so our city clerk at that point reports to the city council. And then you've got recreation, economic development, community engagement. Senior management analyst is Bryce, everybody knows Bryce. And then program administrator, which deals with some of our unhoused, some of our business grants, small business grants, things like that. And then there's, there's Ty and his deputy city clerk. And then I won't go through the departments because they're going to give you their own, their own presentation. The primary functions of the admin area is development of policy recommendations, working with the mayor and council to identify, address issues of community-wide concern. Oversight and direct city departments, community outreach, oversee the city's $155 million budget. Have to attend meetings of the city council and participate in the council deliberations and, or also the director of the emergency services. So any readiness or natural disaster, man-made disasters coordinated out of my office and that's the responsibility of the city administrator. Operational highlights, developing a sustainable budget plan, really through COVID, just stabilizing the organization, keeping the doors virtually open. And then reopening city hall to the community, which we were one of the first cities in the county to do so. Continuing to provide essential services and then economic development comes out of my office as well. And I've already talked about those three initiatives and then some unhoused efforts, which we've done from our program administrator. And council committee recommendations to do some things to, to help with those efforts. And then enhancing emergency management services and preparation. Operational challenges, it's not even really a challenge, it's just what we're in the business of doing is engaging our residents and customers. And during COVID, we, we learned we had to change how we do that. We also have a diverse community that speaks various languages. And so we, we've worked in engaging that and providing opportunities for those regardless of what, what they speak, to engage and to participate local government. Helping our vulnerable populations, that's, that could be housing, that could be the unhoused, that could be any, anyone who's vulnerable, we call that, who needs our help. We are the last safety net for services. And so some of these things that maybe were once provided by the county, the community doesn't really want to hear what the county does that. They see us as the local government and so we've stepped in in some areas that maybe have been a little non-traditional for local government, but we are, we are here, we are here for the residents. You know, a challenge is local control eroding from the state. Housing laws, environmental, solid waste laws, some of them, regardless of how we feel about them as programs, they have economic impacts on the city. And so sometimes they call them unfunded state mandates and most every state mandate is an unfunded state mandate. So they tell us what we have to do and then we have to figure out how to pay for it out of our money, but just a challenge at times. Multi-jurisdictional issue, we are not an island down here in South County. We're part of the Silicon Valley, the Bay Area and a lot of different jurisdictions. We deal with a lot of different groups, the Water District, Local Agency Formation Commission. You know, we just don't get to operate in these, within these borders, we need the help of everybody and we have to collaborate. And everybody has different opinions on that collaboration time. And then increasing legislation and requirements, it's a little, as a, as a local government and administrator, it's not the bills that get passed that scare me. It's the ones that almost got passed that scare me sometimes. And there are hundreds of them that would really change what we do. And so, you know, not getting into, to politics or what I think about them, it's just, there's a lot coming down from, from Sacramento and that, that's a challenge at times. Okay, this is my contact information and you could get this off of, you know, the website as well. Do you have any questions about the administration department, anything? Not the most exciting, I expect you will have more questions for other departments, but we're the paper pushers. Okay, thanks. Okay, I'm going to do finance, which is near and dear to my heart because I used to be the finance director. And Harjot Sangha, who is not here, wanted to be here, but he had a family commitment and you'll get to see him and get to know him through the course of time. So I'll do finance real quick. 13 employees in the finance department and they handle the accounts receivable, payable, they administer the budget, any general accounting, financial planning, payroll, utility billing. So your water bill comes from finance and revenue collection. And then they're responsible as the city auditors to ensure that everybody's practicing good accounting within the city. And their primary objectives are financial planning, budgeting, reporting, treasury management. The city has a significant amount of idle cash, hundreds of millions of dollars in cash that just sits there and we invest it to make returns on it. And that's the objective of the finance department. And then the Long-Term Capital Improvement Plan, which is all these projects that you're seeing and council will deliberate which projects we should be doing going forward. And, and then so they develop that program. Operational highlights is Enterprise Resource Planning System for a lot of us, or some of you don't know what that is. That's the city's financial software and not just financial software, payroll, utility billing, HR, things like that. We replaced a 20-year-old system during COVID and so that was a big change for us. And those of you who do have water bills will see some changes in that as utility billing now goes through its change in software. And we've seen some really positive things in the areas of contracts with vendor interactions. We get people paid faster, we get them more accurate, we've eliminated a lot of the paperwork. So it doesn't sound that exciting, but for, for, to see the difference when you, you are able to streamline and make people's jobs a little bit easier. And vendors like getting paid faster too, so it's been a good product for us. Online technology utilization, social media, things like that have really enhanced the way we, or they've really changed. Some people would argue enhanced, it really changed how we communicate with our residents and our businesses. And COVID-19 forced us to really stretch our limits about how we do that and we certainly have learned a lot. And then we've made significant updates to city financial policy and practices. The council in general has been extremely aggressive in trying to address some of these unfunded liabilities and, and such. And so they, they have allocated money aggressively. And then we have policies and practices that the council has adopted to, to kind of give us some rules to follow. The worst time to create a financial policy is when you're in the middle of a financial crisis. And so our council and staff have been real good in working on those things. And then cost recovery, the fees that we charge for our services, rate study, water rates, wastewater rates, things like that are things that we have to make sure we're recovering the cost. And also provide the services that we take in for that money. Operational opportunities, much like I stated, automation of processes and workflow, revenue enhancements. And then pension and other post-employment benefit cost management strategies. We were probably one council meeting away from issuing pension obligation bonds and then the market switched on us almost immediately. And so we paused that, we're, we're not going to give up on that, but we are going to sit and wait. So these are always opportunities that we're looking on to lower our cost. And then there's Harjot, you know, information. All right, I'm going to, I think this is my last one and then we're going to, we're going to let you hear from somebody else. Communication and engagement, this is Rochelle, she's back in the room, communicating and engaging. This is really anything you see on our social media, on our, a lot of our website, our meetings are handled by Rochelle's area. And they are the, the pulse of the community and she's always working to see how we engage them more. It used to be called public information, well, information is information, but engagement is a much different animal in that you're actually interacting, you're hearing both, both ways communication. And we've made a lot of advancements in this kind of work. Building capacity as an organization and trust with the community by bridging the gap between residents and the decisions of local government. One of the ways we do this is by having a candidate briefing, you know, we have this as public, we let the, you know, the candidates ask the questions, the public sees the, the, the answers. And we're engaging instead of just informing. Engaging with the community through digital and in-person mediums such as weekly newsletters, social media, community meetings and community engagement campaigns. Working with the media, we do spend a lot of time working with the local media regardless of what we have going on. They are a tool in getting our information out, not always in the way we, we would like to portray it, but they are, they are, they do have an audience and so we have to work with them. And then providing accurate and timely information during emergency situations. And we've gotten plenty of practice with that during COVID and I think we do a really good job of getting information out there in, in many different medias. Operational highlights, develop a process for. Operational highlights, develop a process for film permits. We occasionally do get people wanting to film here and so we require a fee for that and then so those are those are the things. An earned media strategy, if you don't know what an earned media strategy is, it's the opposite of a paid media strategy. We're not paying anybody to advertise us or talk about us, but it's good usually when they do and we hope that when they do speak of us, they speak of us well. And so strategies on how to make sure that message gets to those people who are repeating it or talking about us. And then the biggest highlight I can state is that we reach more residents now than we ever have. More meetings are in Spanish, more meetings will be in Spanish and we will be looking at any other languages and such we need to to have translated and interpreted to make sure we're reaching everybody we can. And so we're we're really proud of where we've come, we have a long way to go and we'll keep, we're going to keep working on that. Operational challenges, continuing to upgrade outdated equipment. One thing about when we were away for COVID and we didn't meet here, we got to change a lot of the equipment out. And so you may not see it here, but these cameras are actually from this century and this computers are actually from this century as such and it's making a big difference in the quality of product and it will also give us opportunities going forward to engage the community in different ways. And so there has been discussion about, well, will you do hybrid meetings and and things like, we never really even had the chance to do that before because of the technology and so we have some of those investments, we're on our way at least having that opportunity and and consideration of doing so. And then the continuing changing landscape of digital media and communications. Okay. Okay, so that's Rochelle Bedell and I said she is hiding back here in the back and she's our communication and engagement manager and that's her contact information. Hey, are there any questions from the candidates of anything I've talked about or you want to get on to the more fun stuff? Okay, all right. With that, I'll turn it over to Chief Espinosa, our police department.
Good evening. I've been with the organization almost 20 years and I was appointed chief on October 1st, 2020. Prior to that, I spent some time with city of Asheville and the UC Davis campus. We are a department of 101 strong, 67 of those being sworn. And so the non-s sworn support staff positions come from public safety communicators or dispatchers, police records technicians, the folks you encounter at the front counter when you come up the stairs here at the department. Our detention service officers, we do run a type-two temporary holding facility and so we have full-time detention service officers and also our community service officers. And typically you see the difference in the color of uniform they wear. So the community service officers will wear the light blue and the sworn officers and the detention service officers will will wear the navy blue uniforms. And we also have our volunteer personnel. And so the majority of our allotted budget amount, it goes to personnel services, salaries. And so the other expenditure accounts that we have help us really provide an enhanced level of service to the community. And some of those expenditure accounts include contractual services, maintenance and repairs and supplies. The department is divided into three divisions and really each division has other accelerated duties that are not listed here. And, you know, we're a medium-sized department, so most of our folks wear several hats. And for example, the administrative services commander is a captain that not only is he in charge of the of the communications center, records, the property department and budget, but he also runs other specialty units as well. And field operations is really the patrol officers that you see on a daily basis. The addition that we have to these these teams is the community engagement team and that is comprised of our school resource officers and our quality of life officers. Also under field operations is the jail. We do share a couple specialty teams with the city of Morgan Hill and those also fall under field operations and that's the SWAT team and the negotiations team. Special operations is traffic and the anti-crime team. The anti-crime team really is a specialty team that focuses on hot topic crime, hot spots or issues that we may have. So it could be anything from narcotic issues, narcotic complaints to violent gang crimes. Some of the the accomplishments that we've had these last couple of years that we're proud of post-COVID are really have have occupied significant amount of staff time and we just went live with our new records management system. Really, we had to relearn the whole way we input reports and that was particularly important when now at the national level, we have to change our way we report our crime. So now the national incident-based reporting system took over the old uniform crime reports that the FBI mandated for us to report on a yearly basis. And really that's provides all those statistics to the community and the public. We also became compliant with the Racial Identification Profiling Act and that was became in effect first of the year. And so our new records management system is it's automatically built in. So the information that is provided through the computer aid dispatch information is all it's 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 sent to the state via the RMS project. I mentioned the community engagement team and we added a second school resource officer to Christopher High and really they've implemented a restorative justice approach to to ed procedures to most of the interactions with the students there on on campus. And we've seen that a lot, the majority of their contacts have been referrals or some sort of counseling session. Department-wide, we provided principal policing training and principal police and his procedural justice and including the community members in that decision-making, providing them a voice, showing respect and neutrality and ensuring that our contacts are in a positive light and we they are actually part of the decision-making process. And it also includes implicit bias training. We also provided LGTPQ plus and de-escalation training to the entire organization and those officers that are newly hired, we are actually offering our third round of principal policing this December to ensure that everyone has been provided that training. On the other spectrum is our our goal to make sure that we keep a healthy and resilient workforce. Throughout the pandemic, we we expected our folks to be here day in and day out, so it took a toll on some of some of our folks. So we developed a wellness program and to kick off that wellness program, we implemented an application, mobile application where they're able to to seek and obtain resources from counseling to workout plans, to meditation videos. And so we started that up and hopefully we could build on that, making sure that in the long run, we keep them healthy and in turn, we provide a better service to our folks here in the community. At the South County level, we partnered with the school districts, some community-based organizations and our partners up in Morgan Hill and we started the South County Restorative Justice Diversion Program. And that is our effort to, one, hold accountable those those that those juveniles that commit low-level crimes, but at the same time, keep them away from the juvenile justice system and offer them resources to ensure that, one, again, they assume the accountability, but we prevent them from, again, committing those those mistakes. We're proud to be able to resume our engagements efforts in in person. We currently have our Spanish-speaking community academy and so we have a group of about 25 community members that are spending some time on Wednesday nights in our police department and get to know our inner workings of what we do. And so we also had our second annual youth academy and that was a 40-hour academy for those kids, one, to keep them occupied during the summer and two, to hopefully spark an interest in a career in law enforcement. And so that was pretty successful. We did have ice cream with the cop on the first Tuesday of August and typically at the national level, that's when National Night Out gets is hosted. But post-Garlic shooting festival, we pushed it to October because, one, we didn't have the capacity at the time, but it it works out better. It works out better in the planning stages. So first Tuesday in October, we'll be hosting National Night Out as well. And we did have ice cream with the cop. It's something that we've done, this is the second year doing it and we typically attract anywhere from 300 to 400 kids that come out and interact with our officers. Like police departments nationwide, one of the challenges that we've encountered, we continue to face is the ability to recruit new police officers. We are, we we've implemented some pretty aggressive hiring strategies where we're testing on a monthly basis and we have a sergeant assigned full-time to work with our human resource director and and make ensuring that these test dates are scheduled and we continue to push to get some applicants in the door and then hopefully recruit some good people. We are, our philosophy is that we make every attempt to represent those we believe, so our our goal is to always hire local people and making making sure we're representing the community. And we we do have some succession planning challenges, you know, there is a good percentage of our of our staff that is looking to retire here in the next five years, so we have to make plans to replace them. And so we've are in the beginning stages of a mentorship program, making sure that we have people in place to assume leadership positions and make sure that we're getting bodies in as we lose people through attrition. We do have some technology projects that, again, will enhance our ability to provide better better service. We just implemented the the record management system like I explained and we're going to be looking into replacing some of our our first and second generation pieces of equipment that we as as an organization, we're early adopters like the body worn cameras, you know, we've had the body worn cameras for over over 10 years now, so we're looking to replace those. And we're always looking for ways to better provide a better service and work with our partners in the community to address those issues that involve the unhoused and those folks that suffer from behavioral mental illnesses. So that is, that's our our challenges as an organization. And with that, I'll take any questions that you may have. Well, thank you. Thank you, welcome.
My name is Ty Pham, the city clerk here for the city of Gilroy. And as the city clerk, it is a council-appointed position, provided providing legislative support for the city council. And in a nutshell, other things on top of that I do is the local official who administers democratic processes such as elections, access to city records and all legislative actions ensuring transparency to the public. The city clerk acts as a compliance officer for the federal, state and local statutes, including the Political Reform Act, the Brown Act and the Public Records Act along with the Open Government Ordinance. The city clerk manages public inquiries and relationships and then arranges for ceremonial and official functions. So on top of the things I just said up here recently, it's also up there as well. I'm also the custodian of the city records and city seal. I'm the one who has the big 22-pound seal itself, no one else has it here in the city. And I also have a one-time, full-time deputy city clerk. Some operational highlights, I've been here since December of 2021, but we are now fully staffed as of July 2022. We have a new Public Records Act management system and a portal. So back in the day, people used to email me directly or through other departments to submit their public records requests. We actually now have a portal system where people can submit their records request and if there are future requests that they can just go back there and just retrieve their records and on top of that, ask for more records if they wanted to. It also generates a log that we actually use for open government ordinance meetings and whatnot. So this has been a big transformation for the city clerk's office as a whole. We've also are implementing a new agenda management system and video streaming solution. This will be coming up live hopefully by early 2023, so looking forward to that. We've also mandated e-filing for FPPC and Form 700 filing. So no longer do you need to give me the actual paper forms for the Form 700s or along with any of the Form 460 or Form 510s for the campaign statements. Those can be done automatically through the website. So it's a lot of easy procedures for candidates and for council members to do so and along for staff for e-filing their Form 700s. We also do all the public notices on the city website. Back then, it was not done so and we only have one location that we actually noticed public notices, which is that panel over there outside of city hall. But now we actually have a web portal that people can access all of our public notices. So they don't have to come into city hall to see the actual notice itself. We've also provided new ADA listening devices and implemented at city council. So Ms. Aguilar, who's using it at this moment, is now is using one of the equipments at this time. And also we are, I'm currently administering the 2022 election as as we are doing at it at this moment. Next slide, please. Thank you. Some operational opportunities that we're doing is like that we're looking into is providing Spanish translation services at city council meetings. We actually did a successful one back in the last study session with the translation services and we have one here right behind and we provided and it was actually well-attended. On top of that, we're we're going to be revising the records retention schedule for 2023 and then on top of that, we're going to do continue on professional development and training for our city clerk staff. And we will also do continuous training for city staff and on agenda management and the public record software. With that, I'll take any questions from the candidates.
Just curious, what is the agenda management system?
So the system was originally called Prime Gov, but it's now called One Meeting from Rock Solid. The current system we're currently using is MinuteTrack. Yeah. Thank you.
My name's Leann McPhillips and I am the city's administrative services and human resources director. I've been with the city of Gilroy for 23 years and I think I have the best job in the city because I get to work with 300 awesome employees of the city. We have great employees that work for this community. They work hard, they love the community, they love their jobs and so I'm honored that I get to help hire them and I get to help take care of them while they're here working as employees. So if the chief tries to tell you that he has the best job, he's wrong. I think I have the best job. So the administrative services department is actually broken into four different divisions, so I'm going to be talking to you about four kind of separate distinct areas of the city. And so we'll start with human resources and risk management. We're a team of five and a half people and we take care of all the things related to employees, recruitment and selection, all their benefits and how they're paid. We negotiate the labor contracts with our employees. We make sure folks are trained and have the tools they need to do their job. We handle employee safety. Workers' compensation is just one of those things that every business has to address. Employees get injured, we have high-risk employees, police fire and public works, things happen, people get hurt, we got to take care of them. So we do that out of our office. My least favorite part of my job is employee discipline and investigations, but somebody has to do it, so that's me. And we do address issues and and take care of things when we need to with employees. I manage the Personnel Commission, it's a five-member Personnel Commission that handles our classification and pay plan. They hear appeals of grievances, which we rarely have grievances here, I'm proud of that. That means we're resolving problems at a very low level that employees don't feel that they need to go formal and file grievances and and work through the labor organization. We're handling things at a low level and, you know, listening to each other and working cooperatively together. So I don't have a lot of business in that department. And then risk management is another part of my job. So that is the insurance that the city has to protect the city from risk and liability and making sure that we're we're covered and that we have, we can get competitive insurance through risk pools that we belong to. There's claims filed against the city, we handle those and work with our our risk management joint powers authority to make sure those are addressed and folks get responded to. And unfortunately, sometimes claims do turn into civil litigation and so we work with legal counsel that's assigned to us through our risk pool. And so we work with legal counsel that's assigned to us through our risk pool to address those matters and bring them to a resolution. In addition, the information technology division is a part of the administrative services department. There's also a team of five and a half employees. Scott Golden is our IT manager. They run a pretty full-service IT operation. We have a lot of different technology initiatives and projects right now, which are really exciting because it's helping us be more efficient. We're able to provide services in a variety of different ways, a lot of twenty-four-seven operations, but it, you know, access, twenty-four-seven access to different city services. But those projects do take time and, and staff support to get them in place and come up with the best solution that's going to serve both the city organization and our community. We have networks that we have to administer, we have computers everywhere. We have computers in all of our patrol cars and laptops and surface pros and all kinds of things that have to be addressed and taken care of. And our IT department does a good job of doing that and then handling our telecommunications for the city. In addition, facilities services as part of the administrative services department. Walter Dunkel is our facility superintendent and they maintain fifty-seven different city-owned facilities and structures out in the field. We handle the janitorial services for all of our city's facilities and structures, so, so these buildings stay clean and available, which became incredibly important during COVID nineteen. And so this team worked really hard to make sure that we had a safe place for our employees to work. Many of our employees didn't have a choice, they had to come to work. You can't, police officers can't work from home, firefighters can't work from home, public works maintenance workers can't work from home. So they had to come in and we had to do our best to keep this workplace as safe for them as possible. So facilities takes care of keeping everything clean. A lot of after-hours calls for addressing things, a lot of preventative maintenance. And we have some leases and shared facilities that facilities manages as well. And then last but not least, we have fleet services, which is run by a fleet superintendent, which I'll tell you on another slide, we're about ready to hire somebody for that position. We have three hundred and seventy-five different pieces of city-owned equipment ranging from fire engines to patrol units to public works trucks to vehicles that are used by our inspectors. Just whatever vehicles are needed, this unit takes care of them. A lot of preventative maintenance and safety inspections and, and different compliance things that have to be addressed through fleets, insurance repairs, purchasing new vehicles. We need to replace our vehicles sometimes and we try to get the maximum life out of our vehicles, but we do have to budget and plan for replacing. And then we have a fuel island out at our corporation yard to get the best cost-effective fuel for our vehicles that are used by our employees. And the fleet division manages the fuel island and, and purchasing of fuel and, and everything compliance-related associated with having a fuel station at our corporation yard. Some of the highlights that we'd like to share with you, just a few things about each one of these divisions. We just recently secured multi-year labor agreements with the city's labor groups with a focus on recruitment and retention. As you have heard from the chief and you'll hear from some of our other managers, hiring and retaining employees is a super important priority for the organization. So for this round of negotiations, that was an important focus and we were able to get multi-year agreements, which provides some stability for the organization and the employees. And, and so that was, it took a big effort, but we got that done. And so that is being, that's now been implemented and we're moving forward with that. There are a lot of different employment aspects associated with COVID nineteen. Any of you that are working for an employer, you know that there were so many different things that we had to address with employee safety, vaccinations, testing, communication, people going out on COVID leave. All that got managed out of our office. We worked very closely with our finance department this last year to implement a new human capital management program, which is HR and payroll and all the data associated with our employees and how they're paid and compensated, their leave benefits, et cetera, feeds into the budget. So that took a year to do a transition from our legacy system to the new system, but it went live on July first and we've gotten three paychecks and everything, nothing really bad happened, so that was really good. We were excited about that. This last year, we completed sixty-five different recruitment processes and we onboarded fifty-four new employees and unfortunately off-boarded thirty-nine employees who separated. And a big chunk of those were retirements and planned separations, but we do have some natural turnover that happens in our organization, just like anywhere else. In information technology, the implementation of the enterprise resource planning system of which the human capital management is just one piece and the land management system initiatives are a top priority for the IT team right now. We are trying to get all those modules implemented and live because that's our core system that is helping us run the organization from a, from a technology perspective. We did some upgrades in this council chambers with the audiovisual system. We have a lot of desktop replacements that happened this last year. With city hall reopening, we created a central check-in area with a queuing system. And so IT was really helpful in, in getting that in place for our, you know, the safety of our employees and, and having that single point of entry to city hall. A lot of network work that went into getting our fire station alerting system in place, which was something that we really needed to improve. We did that. There was some assistance with the police department. We have a public safety systems administrator who really focused and worked with the chief and his team to get the new records management system and computer-aided dispatch system up and going and that just went live. And we've also completed a comprehensive cybersecurity assessment. Right now, that's a vulnerability for a lot of organizations and we put a priority on this and budgeted and planned for it. We've got the assessment done, we're working on our strategic plan and our implementation plan. And we'll be ticking off initiatives as we go, as we go forward with the, obviously the highest priority things first. In facilities, a variety of different projects, this is just a few of the things that they worked on this last year. Resurfacing the Christopher High School Aquatic Center Activity Pool because that activity pool portion is owned by the city. It's a joint cooperative facility there. We own the building that the old city hall restaurant is in downtown and we're, we're the landlord. So we have to take care of things sometimes that, that happened in that facility. So we had to replace some emergency repairs on some sewer lines there, which was a big undertaking. We did some moving around here in city hall during COVID to help with customer service and the finance department relocated to another area of the city and recreation moved over by the senior center. And so that takes facilities helping get that all set up and getting those folks moved and good work areas for them to have and to work in. Vandalism occurs at our parks and our facilities teams does step in to address some of those. We are the, we own the cherry blossom apartments on Monterey Road and we have a project in place now where we completed an inspection of the facility, we're doing some upgrades there. This is a very low-income project and we want those units to be in good condition for the residents that live there. And then this team, like I said, did a lot of decontamination and sanitizing of workspaces this last year to keep our workforce safe and any visitors coming into our city's facility safe in light of COVID nineteen. And then lastly, with our fleet services, we hired and trained two new equipment mechanics. We've had almost a complete turnover of our fleet team. And so getting those folks hired and trained was really important this last year. Various purchasing vehicles, we have two brand-new type-one fire engines that are this close to being delivered to the city and those are long overdue. We, we, those are big purchases, it costs a lot of money, fire engines cost a lot. But we worked through a process to get those, get those budgeted and planned for. And we're maybe a month, I think about a month from delivery of those, of those engines to the city, so that's going to be awesome. And then we did a upgrade at the fuel station and we are in final steps to bring on a new fleet superintendent in the very final hiring phases, so I'm excited to have that new person here to help, help with all of our fleet operations. Some of the challenges we have, like already has been mentioned, recruitment and retention of best qualified employees, that's a priority for the organization. We need good people serving our community, our community deserves that. So we try to hire folks, local folks as, and folks that are highly qualified to fill different jobs, but some of them are more challenging than others. As the chief was talking about, not everyone wants to be a police officer anymore. Unfortunately, it's not a profession that everybody wants to do. And so we're, you know, really working hard to attract people who have it in their heart to serve and to do it the way we want them to do it here in Gilroy. And so it takes time to find those, those great people. But we're, we're very focused on it and we've been very successful in bringing on great employees. But it is a challenge. Again, employee safety, implementing our new human capital management module. Insurance rates are, are out the roof right now, it's a super hard market and we're just trying to continuously be competitive and, and work with our risk pool to get the best insurance rates because that's a significant expense for the city. In IT, it's just the volume of projects and the number of staff we have. We can only take on what we can actually do. So it's a lot of prioritizing and reprioritizing and going after those initiatives that are the most important for the organization. So we have a team that reviews those projects and we prioritize those and our IT staff does a really good job of, of getting those to go live. And then in facilities, the challenge is just, we have aging city facilities, some of our buildings are old. And so when they're old, they need more repairs. And so we're, we're focused on maintaining them as best we can and planning for replacements as best we can. And then just, you know, keeping things clean and ready for use, planning, you know, capital projects to upgrade facilities and to do improvement projects as we can fit them into the budget. And then we have a huge challenge is that, you know, on a day like this last week with our hot, hot weather, our HVAC system here is really old. And I, I call the facilities team my MacGyver team because I don't know how they're keeping it all together and, but they're doing the best job they can with what we have, but it's just a huge price tag. So that's a challenge for us because we just don't have those resources to do a complete replacement of the system, but that's probably what we need to do. And then again with fleet, you know, we have, we manage our, you know, our fleet, we replace as we can. Some of our vehicles are, are older and we are trying to either, you know, maintain them as best we can and use them as long as we can. But we're focused on, you know, you know, every year, what can we replace and upgrade to make sure our employees have safe vehicles to use to do their job. Availability of vehicles has been a challenge, just getting vehicles. And with the chip shortage, that's been difficult because most of vehicles are reliant upon electronics. And if the chip manufacturers can't produce, then the auto production slows down and then we can't get vehicles either. So we've been challenged by that. Computerized field tracking system is, is a challenge. We, we upgraded the fuel island and now we want to do better fuel usage tracking through a computerized system as opposed to a manual system, which we have now. And then we have one more equipment mechanic to replace because we had one long-term mechanic who, who did retire a little earlier than planned. So we'll be working on filling that position. And that's my contact information and I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have. Variety of topics and areas. Some are three and some are four. So multi-years. Any other questions? Thank you.
Hi, everyone. My name is Jim Wyatt, I'm the fire chief for the Gilroy Fire Department. And just a little bit about myself, I, I've been in the emergency services for forty years. Been a paramedic for that same length of time. I started in the fire service thirty-eight years ago and I've loved it ever since. And I'm just ecstatic to be working for the city of Gilroy. I retired from city of San Jose as a battalion chief. I came over here as a consultant and then they liked me. I became a division chief and then at the same time that Chief Espinoza became a police chief, I became the fire chief. And I'll just say that as small as a town as we are, we're filled with the same challenges that any big city would have. And if I could have the next slide, please. So our mission and services, our mission, and we take this fully to heart, is to protect the lives, property and environment of Gilroy. Our motto is first and service to the community and we live that every day. Our core services are expanding and I'll just say this, that forty years ago, I never would have thought that half of these items would have been part of our job. But it's become part of the necessary element of providing good services to the community. Although obviously the first one that we focus on is firefighting. We do both structure and wildland firefighting. People think, well, how much wildland do we have? Well, we're actually surrounded by wildland and some of the biggest fires that the state has ever seen has been right to the, to the east of us. We are currently keeping ourselves well-prepared for wildfires in other communities. I'll talk about that in just a moment. Our next and actually our largest component of all the call volumes or the calls that we respond to is EMS, emergency medical services, and we provide advanced life support. So we provide a paramedic or two along with an ALS-trained crew to every medical call that we respond to. Approximately seventy percent of our calls are medical. We run a total call volume of seventy-two hundred calls a year. It increases roughly between five and ten percent. And so as our community grows, we have to respond obviously to more, to more incidents and that's been part of our growing pains. But I think that, and I say this with all honesty, if you look at our delivery of services across the board, I think we're the, one of the finest fire departments that you'll ever run across. And I say that from, coming from a, a large metro department where you basically become a number. And I, I know every single person in our department. I actually know just about everyone in this city as well. We work very closely together and as much as I'm talking about the fire department, it really is the city of Gilroy that provides these services. I could not have my firefighters do what they're doing without the support that we get from across the board behind me. So with that, I'll just say that, and I'll just give you an example of the, of the type of service that we provide. In nineteen, or I'm sorry, twenty twenty, we had thirty-three cardiac arrests where we responded and we were able to get a pulse back on ten percent of those people. I'm sorry, ten of those people, that's, that's roughly thirty percent. If you compare that to the county that has a three percent save rate and to the nation, a three percent save rate, we're doing pretty darn good. Vehicle accident response, we, not only do we just respond to the vehicle accident, but we, we're all hazards. We perform not only advanced life support, but we're also using the jaws of life and every bit of the latest technology to break into these vehicles so that we can safely extricate folks. In addition to that, we're, we're, we use the, the air ambulance probably the most in, in any other part of this county. We don't, we're a pretty good distance away from the trauma centers. That's the problem with Gilroy being so far south. We don't have the robust hospital facilities to, to turn to, so we have to transport them out. And so if, if, if needed, we'll, we'll get you to the trauma center in, in as quick a time as we can. Our goal is to, to save as many lives as possible and we know that lives are hanging in the balance as we, as we let the minutes go by. So we, we take our jobs pretty seriously in that. Hazardous materials or hazardous incident responses, we don't have that many fortunately, but when we do get them, we have a tremendous amount of resources that we can turn to to help mitigate and prevent some of the environmental disasters that other communities have suffered. Special operations, that's kind of new to us. We have partnered with our police department in providing SWAT medic protection as officers go into high-risk entries on, on searches and suspects. Along with that, we've partnered with them on a, on a drone program. They actually provide drone reconnaissance for us on vegetation fires as well as structure fires, keeping our firefighters safe and allowing us to put the resources where we need them. We in turn provide the same for the police department when they need perimeter surveillance as well as search and rescue capabilities. So we're using the latest technologies from this century to enhance our capabilities of providing a better service to you. And then behavioral health, that was something new for us about three or four years ago. We were the first and only fire department to provide behavioral health assessment as well as diversion to, other than the ERs, to specialty mental health care facilities. And it became a model for the state. Right now, the Senate County EMS Agency, Emergency Medical Services Agency, is implementing what we started off with countywide. So we're very proud of that element and to be an essential part of the state's decision to go that direction. And then fire prevention and and public health fire prevention, it it sounds pretty basic, but really the the robust code enforcement that's being done and not through the fire department, but actually through community development that we partner with. Having sprinkler systems in new new home construction as well as commercial, that's an essential part of it. But in addition to that, we go back and we make sure that the businesses and the residences, particularly the high-density residences are are meeting the code. And so that's a that's a big part of what we do to prevent the very fires that cause the tragedies that we don't want to ever see in our community. Public health, I'll just say that, and you've probably heard plenty of COVID stuff, but Gilroy Fire Department was the first to provide mobile vaccination services to the most vulnerable. We identified people within our community that could not get to vaccination centers and we provided vaccinations to them. It was a heavy lift. It wasn't without a lot of pushback from other agencies that saw that as a threat. But the fire service in general prevailed and we were able to literally vaccinate thousands of our residents when there wasn't a whole lot available to vaccinate. In other words, we didn't have a whole lot of public health nurses that were available to help us. So we stepped in. And we never stopped providing emergency services to these people as many other places didn't want to provide extensive medical treatment. Our folks said that we would. And so our firefighters, our our paramedics, because we have such long transport times to to facilities, were there in the back of the ambulance all the way with our critical COVID patients. We will not give up. Our job is to plan ahead for the next pandemic. So we keep our our firefighters and our paramedics well-versed on on emergency, sorry, emerging infections that could become the next pandemic. Next slide, please. So department highlights our budget and personnel. We have a budget of about 12.6 million with 42 sworn personnel and two non-sworn personnel. These are our our analysts and our our fire tech person. So we're a very small organization, but we we get a lot done with what we've got. Our organization, as far as our sworn personnel, we have four chief officers, one of those included. We have 10 company officers. We have nine fire engineers, non-fire nine, it says non-sworn, but actually sworn. 19 firefighter paramedics, one analyst and one administrative tech. We introduced a study, standards of coverage study, and it talked mainly about our ability to get to most emergencies within seven minutes. And if you think about it, that's a pretty robust goal, but it's one of the reasons that we saved so many people in 2020 where we were getting there within four to four to five minutes. And if you look at the national statistics, the for every minute that you don't get to somebody's household who's gone into cardiac arrest, their their survival rate decreases by one minute, by 10%. So if we can get there within four minutes, we got a 60% chance of saving them. This was adopted by the council in 2019 and the goal is to respond, like I said, to most emergencies within seven minutes, 90% of the calls. Right now, we're working on our interim Santa Teresa fire station. That would be our fourth fire station. It was approved council this year in July. We are we are anticipating the final build, assuming that we have no other setbacks on on getting supplies for our modular building by February of 2023. We are currently at Christmas Hill Park temporarily at the, what we call the Teak Building. It's a city-owned building. But it's inadequate for our needs and it's not exactly centrally placed for Santa Teresa, but it does give us a step-off point to get to all parts of Santa Teresa as well as the rest of the city. And we have been able to knock, even as a part-time unit, knock about two minutes overall in our responses citywide. Two fire engines, as Leanne mentioned before, are due to be delivered in about three weeks. We're very proud of that. It's much needed. Our 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 fleet is aging. And I'll just say that decisions were made several years ago to extend the life of some of our apparatus. And that was based on our call volume, but we've increased since six years ago from 5,000 calls to 7,200 calls. In other words, 30%, and we anticipate a 10% growth each year. It's little wonder that we're wearing out our apparatus sooner than what we thought. Let's see. And then OES statewide fire mutual aid. As mentioned previously, we are constantly preparing ourselves for wildfires, not only within our community, but we realize the importance of our expertise in going to somebody else's community. We were dispatched to the the Six Rivers Complex Fire for two weeks and we assisted with protecting other people's homes and also fighting their fires. I actually wanted to send more of our folks, but then the weather changed and there was actually rain. So they were finally returned, but now we're in a very hot time period. Unfortunately, we had a bout of COVID with a couple of our members, so I couldn't send send them out to the mosquito fire, unfortunately. They were disappointed about that and you're probably wondering, well, why would they be disappointed? The issue with a firefighter is that we sharpen our skills when we do, when we go to these responses. And I've got such a new department. We've got several people that we've hired on over the past couple of years that literally about a third of our department has less than three years on. And another third of that, as far as supervisors, have a little bit less than three years in supervision. So our our goal is to partner with the state, send them to somebody else's fire so they can become well-versed on what a mega fire is and bring back back those skills to our community. I'll just say that last year, we set the state's record for deployment. We were out for a total of 81 days continuously. It didn't mean the same crew, but we rotated crews every two weeks. And I got a personal phone call from the Region Two Division Chief from Cal OES who said that Gilroy Fire Department set the standard for the state. Next slide, please. What are our challenges? Well, as you've heard across the board, it is still recruitment and staffing. There is a paramedic statewide shortage and that is causing us a lot of stress. I say that to you because I don't see that changing, at least for the next couple of years with COVID. Schools that were just barely making it in the in paramedic training suddenly have to had to stop and delay and they lost students and and now they're starting to come back, but we have fewer schools to draw from. As a result, just giving an example, in this county, the fire departments have been hiring like crazy the the ambulance companies that provides first responder paramedic services. And now they're they're at a critical stage where they're actually shutting down some of their ambulances. Fortunately, we have in this community our own ambulance, so in a critical situation, we will do the transport ourselves. So rest assured, we have plans and backup plans on how to deal with this crisis. But nonetheless, our struggle is just getting people to be firefighters. And I, when I say people, male, female, it for us, it doesn't matter to us who's on the hose line, just that they're there and committed to put the fire out for you as well as save a life. I already mentioned the SOC study. Part of that SOC C measurement was that to make sure that we maintain this seven-minute response time, we really needed the fourth fire station. That's the reason why we're still pushing for it. Full staffing and eventually a permanent building. We're still a few years out from getting that, but I'm feeling very confident that with the support of the city, the support of the residents here, we're going to get you the the fire station that you deserve in the district that's most underserved. And then apparatus replacement, Leanne alluded to it, but we got two brand-new fire engines. We're looking at a new fire truck that we have to spec out. They're very costly and it's probably a five-year build. And our fire fire truck right now, the aerial that we have is inadequate for the build that we're having and the narrower streets that we're getting. So we have to, we have to look at what is going to work out best for our community and plan for it right now. And then also our Type Three Wildland Engine. We have four Wildland Engines that serve this city. And you're probably thinking, well, that's more than what you need. Not really. We get called in mutual aid to our partners just north of us, Cal Fire and Morgan Hill. We are part of their Wildland Response and also their structure response and vice versa. When we need help in our city, we don't have enough resources to do it all on our own. So we do call in Cal Fire and sometimes we have to rely on on San Jose. So you can see the big fire problem, if you will, of resources spread out, spread thin. But like I, like I said, for a department our size, you get a pretty good bang for the buck. And I'll just just add, and this is something I tell to every new hire and every supervisor that we have in in the department. I'm looking for three things from you. I need you to be competent, compassionate and committed to the city. Everything else is secondary to me. And I say that to you because I live here too. And I'm first generation and I've got my kids and my grandkids that I want to leave a legacy for. So I know I sound like I'm pretty old, but I'm pretty young in the mind. And if you ask the guys that I, guys and gals that I work with, they say I'm pretty pretty spry. So count on me being around for a bit. Next slide, please. So again, my name is Jim Wyatt. If you have any questions, I'll entertain them right now for you. Yes, sir. In the past six years. Yeah, I, our hiring has not been able to keep up with that and I'll just say we had a big setback with COVID. We weren't able to bring in the candidates as early as we could have, so we've been working our our existing firefighters pretty hard. It is going to be built. It's going to be new. Yes, brand new. So we staff it part-time with a part-time engine, sometimes a Wildland Engine, sometimes the ambulance, depending on the time of the year. So we staff it with two for 12 hours. To give you an idea, I didn't really tell you what sort of how we respond with our engines. Our Type One engines, that's the standard engine that you that you see, that's for all hazards, not only handling medical calls, hazardous material calls, but all all fire calls. And we staff that with a staff of three. With the Santa Teresa, we don't get that luxury, so we actually have to have them attached to another one of our other district engines when we respond to a medical or a a low-level file fire call. On every large fire call, every structure fire, we send the whole city to all our resources to that to handle it. So I did talk to our city administrator today. I'm working on a plan. I've got nine ideas. Any one of them would help out a little bit. All of them would help out tremendously. I feel pretty confident that I can get us up to the 38 that we need to fully staff. Right now, we're at 32. And really, we've got three of them in in training, so we're down to 29. But I have a plan to get us up to to the 38 that we need. Okay, thank you very much. It's nice meeting you all.
Good evening. My name is Sharon Goey. I'm the Community Development Director. I've been in the development industry for over 20 years, but I just joined the City of Gilroy near the end of July, so I've been here a little over a month. So I did bring notes with me, so if you don't mind, I'll probably hold them up so I can look at you at the same time. So here's a quick overview of our department. We have 22 budgeted positions to our shared positions with Public Works Department. Our budget is around $5 million. And our department really serves several functions for the city's overall development services. Our Building Division team applies the California Building Codes to ensure health and safety for all buildings and structures in the City of Gilroy. And the California Building Code really is a set of, you know, it's a whole new set of codes. Includes the Building Code, Residential, Electrical, Mechanical Plumbing, Energy, Historical Building, Existing Building and Green Building. And our Code Enforcement Team is responsible for enforcing zoning code and property maintenance code. And the goal of Code Enforcement is really to enhance neighborhood quality and the general welfare of the community. Our Planning Team provides current planning and long-range planning services. And these services is to ensure conformance with the city's general plan and zoning code. The Planning Team also reviews a variety of planning application, land use application projects. And they administer the California Environmental Quality Act, or CEQA, for environmental review related to those proposals. Our Fire Prevention Team, you heard the chief mention that a little bit earlier. They conduct plan review and inspection for all new development projects in the city. They also do annual permit inspection for certain types of occupancy in accordance with the fire code. The Fire Prevention Team also ensures safe handling of hazardous materials. And they also administer the pre-treatment program, which is also known as industrial wastewater. And this includes permitting, inspection and enforcement and industrial wastewater sampling. And the housing function in our department provides a variety of supportive services and assistance programs for low-income residents and the vulnerable residents in our community. And this is done through local nonprofits by using some federal and state funding. And you'll hear about that a little bit later, too. And our Customer Service Team works on implementing process improvements and use of technology to provide access to information and services 24/7. And our team also works with other departments such as Public Works Engineering to ensure that our development services is provided in the most streamlined manner. And we can try to expedite and make sure, you know, customer services are provided the best we can. Entitlements, permits and inspections, those are really the day-to-day activities of our department and the main operations of our department. We review applications, review plans, taking projects and take them through the entitlement process and then take them through the building permit process and then we conduct inspections all the way through occupancy. So give you some sample numbers. In the last fiscal year, so that's July 2021 through June 30th this year, we issued 8,000, sorry, 1,855 building permits and conducted almost 11,600 inspections. Based on the first two months of this year, so that's based on July and August, our projection for this fiscal year is going to be over 2,000 building permits and conducting over 12,000 inspections. So those number of building permits may be a new record for us. Electronic and in-person services, you heard about that a little bit earlier. Because of the pandemic, we had to pivot very quickly. The city used to accept applications and submissions all on paper. And because of pandemic, we had to implement very quickly an online, submit all online plan review system. And through this platform, customers were able to submit things online and then we can process that online. In August last year, the team resumed in-person services at City Hall. So we're meeting customers at the counter and meeting applicants in person. So this hybrid model of electronic virtual services combined with in-person services has has really enhanced the efficiency for customers. October last year, the city council adopted objective design standards. And these are standards for all mixed use and multifamily residential developments in the City of Gilroy. And the intent of these standards is to provide applicants and developers with a clear understanding of the city's expectations when it comes to the project site design and the structure design. Development fee updates, that was completed in June to help achieve cost recovery for providing services. And after that, our team worked on programming and configuring these fees actually into the premise system. So we completed that in August. And speaking of the premise system, we've been working on implementing a new premise system. And that's called the Intergov Land Management System. We do have an implementation consultant that's helping us. But projects like this really takes a lot of team members to all roll up their sleeves, you know, and work on the programming and configuring the city's processes in coordination with the consultant. And this is in coordination with our IT friends as well. And this will be an ongoing effort and will continue this project into next year. Comprehensive zoning code and zoning map update. This effort really initiated following council adoption of the 2040 general plan in late 2020. And we're updating the zoning code and the zoning map to really align and to be able to implement the general plan. And this update is also needed for compliance with new state zoning laws, new state housing laws. As you heard a little bit earlier, I think Jimmy mentioned that the state has lots of new laws, especially in the areas of housing these last couple of years. So it's a very complex endeavor and will continue this with our consultant into next spring. Housing element update, affordable housing policies. The state has required cities to update their housing element every eight years. So this next period is from 2023 to 2031. And housing element is really the city's housing plan for the next eight years. And this plan should be setting the long term goals and the vision for housing in the City of Gilroy. And this plan will facilitate the production of a variety of types of housing and also accommodate the projected housing growth and the housing needs across all income levels in the city. So our team has conducted multiple community outreach meetings. And as part of the housing element update, we'll also be looking to develop housing policies and programs as part of this effort. Now, reach codes, that's really local amendments to the California Energy Code or the California Green Building Standards Code. So what this means is that there are really sustainability enhancement efforts. And the purpose is to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. And our team has been working since last year in developing recommendations. And these are, you know, pretty technical code requirements. And they were working in coordination with the Silicon Valley Clean Energy Group. And just in August this year, we went to council and got some feedback. So we'll be bringing back to council a formal ordinance for adoption. That will be done as part of the adoption for the entire set of codes. Supportive services through federal and state funding. So earlier I can mention our housing team administers this. And for federal funding, that comes from the Department of Housing and Urban Development, which is HUD. And that's the Community Development Block Grant or CDBG funding. So after council allocates the funding, our team works with various nonprofit service providers that were provided the allocation. And through that, we provide service to assist low and moderate income residents. And some of the examples are meals on wheels, rental assistance, bad risk youth programs, senior programs, home repairs or capital projects such as accessibility improvements on sidewalks and curb ramps. An example of state funding, that's through HCD, which is the California Department of Housing and Community Development. And Gilroy just joined the Santa Clara County Consortium last year for this program. The acronym is PLHA and it's Permanent Local Housing Allocation Program Funds. And through this county consortium, Gilroy is funding nonprofit service providers to provide homeless prevention services and various resources and supportive programs for low income residents, fair housing programs and tenant landlord dispute resolution services and meals for homebound seniors. Those are some examples. So we're utilizing federal and state grant funding to provide services that really assist the vulnerable residents of the Gilroy community. And you've kind of heard this earlier too, from, you know, other departments, that we're working on some recruitment efforts. We have 22 budgeted positions in our department. We currently have four vacant positions. So in collaboration, in collaboration with HR, we've been working really hard on the recruitment and reach out to our professional networks to try to attract some applicants to apply. And we have a very dedicated, hardworking team. So we also want to, you know, provide support and professional growth to retain those team members. And succession planning is something you kind of heard earlier too. You know, we have some team members that possess a significant amount of institutional knowledge. And it is important to start this succession planning so we can, you know, share the knowledge and transfer the knowledge to the other team members. And we also want to provide training and professional opportunities so that some of our team members can grow and step up, you know, into leadership positions. So we want to continue to build and have a great collaborative team and leadership team so that we can provide the best services to our residents and businesses. Implementing new state law and laws of local control. You've heard about this a little bit earlier too. Because in the last several years, you know, there's just been lots of housing bills, ADU bills. And when these bills do get signed into legislation, local jurisdictions have to either create new policies or amend existing policies or processes to implement the state laws. And they have been generally taking away local control and imposing requirements where local authorities, local jurisdiction used to have authority. And because these laws have been changing so much, you know, it's been pretty challenging to kind of keep up with all the changes we have to make to implement the new state laws too. And speaking of new state laws, we have new California codes coming to us effective January 1st. There's a new code cycle every three years. And there's actually an intervening code cycle that's every one and a half years. But you don't get entire, you know, new set of codes published. Those are kind of the pages and the changes, you know, that are sent to us. And then we have to insert those into the code books. And I mentioned a little bit earlier, this is what our, you know, building safety team really applies, interprets and, you know, to make sure buildings and structures are safe here. And it's the entire set of codes, you know, which encompasses Building Code, Residential, Electrical, Mechanical Plumbing, Energy, Historical Buildings, Existing Building and Green Building. And what these new codes mean also is training. So in the next several months, we'll be very busy attending a lot of training. And many of colleagues, you know, our colleagues in other cities too are doing the same thing. And regional housing needs allocation, arena, really ties back to the housing element I talked about earlier. As I mentioned, every eight years, we have to come up with a new housing plan based on this projected housing growth. And state determines the housing needs for each region. And then each region, so in the case of Bay Area, that's the Association of Bay Area Governments or AABAG, they all distribute the allocation to jurisdictions. So every jurisdiction has this, you know, what's called arena number. And each city, then we update our housing element, you know, to show that we can accommodate the projected growth in, you know, based on that arena number across different income levels. And the affordable housing policies and programs, you know, that will be kind of part of the housing element update is not just for new housing production, because that's what I know people typically think of. But it also encompasses housing preservation, housing assistance and fair housing programs. Streamlining complex processes is what we always try to do to simplify our procedures and enhance the customer service. And you heard about the new codes I mentioned, so that means we're going to be updating a lot of our handouts and forms to make sure we provide the, you know, newest information and try to simplify ways we can for our customers. And examples of where we have streamlined processes are ADUs, you know, and things like EV charging stations and PV solar profits, you know, that really kind of improve the sustainability efforts in the city. And we continue to streamline our processes to try to decrease the total permitting timeframe. And that will also increase the efficiency for the customers and for our team as well. So one tool to streamline processes is to use technology, which takes me to the next bullet point. And as I mentioned earlier, we've been working on implementing new premise system. And when you have a new system, it's really important to integrate with other systems as well. So you can optimize the functionality of all of these programs. So one key area we'll be partnering with our IT friends with is the integration with, of the premise system with GIS. So that way you can really, you know, increase the GIS based services. Upgrading fleet, I think you heard about that a little bit earlier too. We know there's a need to upgrade technology. There's also a need to update our equipment, you know, our inspection vehicles. We have some vehicles that are over 20 years old, so there's some operational and safety concerns with that. And we also know there are some supply chain challenges with vehicle replacements. So we'll just continue to address the challenges the best we can. And while I've highlighted these as challenges, you know, these also are, you know, these represent opportunities and places where we can make some progress and make improvements. And I think as you can see, our department provides lots of different types of services. And we have, you know, 22 positions, so I think we have a small but mighty team. So there's my contact information. Do you have any questions? Yeah, I think it's similar, you know, in the elements that we strive to provide to attract and retain employees. And in particular, for the development industry, you know, it's kind of been a challenge for, you know, I would say almost all cities, but also on the private side. You know, because we all work with a lot of architects, engineers and contractors. And they also are, you know, going through similar challenges. And in this development industry, just being more retirement, you know, kind of people leaving this field than entering. So one thing, I've kind of been working on sort of, you know, more volunteer efforts in professional organizations is to try to really encourage the next generation, you know, to join this field, you know, whether it's planning or building or, you know, fire prevention, to try to kind of educate people, you know, what this field is about and what a career path they can provide. And also do, you know, provide some internship opportunities and ride along opportunities. Those are ways, you know, to get people to be interested in this field. You know, like I said, because I think development industry overall just been really busy and yet more people leaving than coming in. So we're kind of being all facing similar challenges. But I know there's, you know, efforts out there kind of among, you know, similar minds, people. Because we're all in this field together is, you know, to get more people to enter this and, you know, be interested and stay interested. Thank you.
Good evening, candidates. My name is Daryl Jordan. I'm the Public Works Director here at the city. I've been involved with professional engineering for over 30 years. I'm a professional engineer licensed by the state of California. Joined Jimmy's team about two years ago. Reiterate a little bit what Jimmy said, we've got a really solid executive team here. I've worked for three other cities before and this is probably one of the strongest executive teams I've worked with. We all collaborate well, we get along well, we root for different teams at times, but we still enjoy each other's company and support each other. One of the unique things about Public Works, you've maybe heard from some of the other divisions too, is we're integrated with just about everybody else who's talked here tonight in Public Works. Pretty much anything you see horizontal in the city, streets, sidewalks, underground, that's pretty much us. Anything that goes vertical up in the air, that's pretty much Sharon who just came to talk. She's involved with those things and to make all those things happen, everybody else in the city is included in that. For example, right now, we're helping fire chief right now plan his new fire department. So we're involved with that, with infrastructure on that. Tomorrow, we have an operation with Chief of Police to help with some homeless issues that we're dealing with. We got facilities through Leanne here who spoke, we're dealing with her folks and her team at all times as well. So we're very well integrated with everybody. We work as a, as a great team here. So if you are fortunate enough to join our team, I'd like to just let you know that you have a great team here to support you in what needs to happen in the city. So I'm super excited about that. As far as the description of my department, all the city's infrastructure, like I discussed, sanitary sewer, our water distribution, parks maintenance, streets, traffic signals, storm drainage facilities, sewer treatment plant. And like I said, integration with parks, I got Adam sitting right here, our manager of parks. We may maintain them and keep them up, but he's running programs day in and day out and making those work. So we work hand in hand with him as well. Review of new development for compliance with the city through the state and federal codes and standards. We have a development department in our engineering side of what we do. We kind of have two locations for my department. One stationed here at City Hall, that's all my professional staff, design staff. Then out at the yard, I'm not sure if you know where that's located, out by the freeway. That's where my operations staff is at, where we maintain everything from that facility. So we've got those two locations that we work from. Also included in our description, emergency response, protection of public health and safety. So we support the other two guys in uniform here. Fun little fact on the side is after the 9/11 issue, the president actually designated Public Works workers as first responders with what we were able to do to help support that. So we take a lot of pride into helping these two different divisions and what they need from us in different public safety issues. Our total number of employees is second to the police department. We've got 49 plus a few part time as well. Of course, we'd all like to have some more labor in the future, but we do very well with what we have. We're kind of a lean and mean machine right now. Our current annual budget is probably one of the largest, if not the largest, $86 million. And that's basically due to all the capital projects that are going on right now, which we'll discuss a little bit further. Of those current projects I'd like to highlight tonight is a project that you probably see going on, on around the community as we speak. We've got a bunch of roads tore up right now. We've got curb ramps going in all over town. We're going to spend $4 million this summer rehabbing a bunch of streets in town. And that's quite a few, 149 separate segments throughout the town that we're tracking right now with a small staff of engineers and inspectors. The current council elected to provide a couple more million dollars and was typically in our maintenance program to rehabilitate our streets. So matter of fact, this Saturday morning, we're having a coffee with the mayor. If anybody wants to drop by there to discuss these exact issues here. Another project that you're probably seeing just down the street here is Eagleberry Parking Lot Facility. 149 new parking stalls will be installed there, about a $2 million project, including seven EV stations. So if you do have electrical car that needs charging, soon we'll have some charging stations for there. So that's a big project. If you haven't noticed, we have a camera setup out there too. So you can go on our website, you can tap into that direct link and it can show you on a ongoing basis what's happening out there. So you don't have to be out there to actually watch the project go in. You can do it from your living room if you have a web capability there. So pretty cool. Another huge project, thanks to our finance department, he's not here tonight. Harjo did a big lift on this as well as our city manager, $50 million bond measure to expand our wastewater facility out there. That's pretty huge. So if and when you do get a chance to go out there, you're probably going to want to go out there and take a look at that and tour the facility. It's, it's, it may be a little nerdy because we're engineers, but boy, it's serious exciting for us what's going on out there. And the technology that's being implemented out there is pretty cool. So you'd want to see that. Another project we're preparing right now is another water well project here in town. That, those are very expensive these days, $3.6 million for this CIP project. Again, that's going to provide redundancy in our system, make sure we have potable drinking water throughout the community, make sure our pressures are up and the availability for all the housing is provided. Another project that we're kicking off right now, we received a grant this last year, which was discussed earlier from our city manager, we're trying to leverage our money as best we can. We had a $3.9 million grant for our downtown beautification. So there's two alleyways, gourmet alley and also along the railroad alley on the other side that we'll be improving. New surfacing, landscaping, lighting and some other improvements, trash enclosures and what have you. So that's a pretty fast grant. We have to have that. So that's a pretty fast grant. We have to have that completed by 2024. So we've enlisted Bryce back there in the corner. Don't let him slide by to help us get that completed. He's a huge help for us as well. Another one, development team is processing, just to know how busy we are. This again is with our community development team, 61 projects, 1,881 residential units we're reviewing at some level right now, and 400,000 square feet of commercial projects is processing through the city right now. So you may not see that because you're not seeing stuff come out of the ground yet, but there is a lot of activity that's coming our way if it's not already under construction. So pretty exciting there as well. Some of our operational highlights, completed construction this past year. Leanne mentioned this earlier, fuel station and secondary containment at the corporation yard, so we can provide fuel for all of our vehicles at a better price than what our crazy prices are now at the pump. Ranch site trailer and billing demolition, another thing that my folks like to do. They don't just not like to build things, they like to demo things, too. So I think that was kind of an exciting project. So citywide sign replacement projects, so throughout the city, stop signs, yielding signs, what have you. We went through and replaced practically all of those through town. There's still a few more to do, but that was a big project for us. Upgrading our water meters throughout town. So there, actually, we can just drive by with the trucks and read the meters rather than stopping and having to scan them anymore. We can pick up that information and download it into our new system that Leanne and Harjo are implementing to make that whole system work and billing to go out in an orderly fashion. It's a big project. Water conservation program. For those of you who've lived in the valley for a while, we're in another drought, as you know. So how are we handling that? How are we trying to protect our aquifers and our water sources? We're trying to cut back on our use. I'm sure you've seen those notices that have gone out. We're tracking that pretty good. Actually, our team and our city has done it really well. We're ahead of the game on what our goals were by water conservation. So city as a whole is doing a really good job of not wasting water right now. And then last year, we did another paving project, a 21-city-wide pavement project that went real well. And throughout town, I'm sure you've seen some of the newer streets. If it's black and smooth, it's probably one of the ones we did last year. So, next one. Some of the challenges you've heard from our previous folks tonight, recruiting. It's not an issue of trying on our HR department. They're trying as fast as they can and hard as they can to get the people we need. But right now, there's just a shortage, almost like the computer chips. Engineers cannot be found in the state of California. There's just far and few between. The whole university system is short on them. That's shrinking as well. So again, it's just the availability that's just not there. So we're fighting for every one we can get. And luckily, land's been able to pull in a couple winners for us here as of late. That's really helped us a lot. So not by lack of effort by any means, but just by availability, and they're just not out there. But we're trying as best we can. Plus, we also compete with the rest of our county. And Santa Clara County is a pretty financially healthy county. We're a south county. We're not the healthiest financially city in the whole county, per se. But we still have what we've done lately with negotiations through our HR department has made us very competitive. So we're very happy with that. We're just trying to stay in the game here. More challenges, increasing impact of homeless, including vandalism at our parks, which was mentioned earlier. We've had multiple facilities burnt, not necessarily burnt down, except for a couple porta potties. Some of the bathrooms have been burnt, and so we've been spending a lot of money that we don't like to spend on vandalism and fixing up some of our facilities. So we've got cameras placed throughout our different parks now, so we're trying to catch some of these folks. So that's starting to work. But still, that's another issue that hampers our ability to provide for our local citizens as far as utilities or bathrooms for them to use, facilities to use. So I hate having to bring in the porta potties at our parks, but we have to have something for them out there. But we're working on getting those fixed and putting back in order. Paving and sidewalk programs, we have multiple applications for fixing people's sidewalks around town. We have limited funds, but we're working as fast as we can to get those fixed as quickly as we can. That's always a challenge. I'm sure you've all seen it. We've got tripping hazards throughout town. We're trying to minimize those as best we can. Upgrading our existing facilities and infrastructure, trying to keep up with that. A lot of our underground utilities, like they mentioned earlier, 20, 30, 40 years old. It's not just our electric, but everything underground's been down there a long time. Some of that's failing, and we have capital projects scheduled for that. We're just trying to keep up with that, and that is a challenge. Upgrading our fleet, again, we were down with COVID for a while. There's a lot of cars out there that, you know, a lot of dust on them weren't being used, people working from home, at least on the engineering side. And now we're back, and we need to upgrade some of those. But again, finding those vehicles in this market is pretty challenging right now. And then maintaining our urban forests, this is the only area that we do go vertical on some of our responsibilities is all the street trees throughout town, including our parks, we're responsible for. So when you see these trees falling down or issues with that, that's pretty much our parks team at our utilities or facilities out there at the yard that are handling those. We try to, we put them on a schedule to try to stay ahead of those as best we can. But we already have a half a million dollar budget on an annual basis to try to do that. We're still behind. So it's tough to stay on top of those, especially with the drought. There's a lot of stressed trees out there, a lot of trees that shouldn't be dropping limbs that are dropping limbs right now. There's a big wind today, so I'm assuming we're going to have a few more calls tonight, if not tomorrow. So that's another tough one to keep up with. That's my contact information. I'm either here at City Hall or I'm out at the yard. So feel free to come by and see us when you need to. Any questions I can? In what area? Yeah. Well, one thing you will find out is our city council meetings are very interactive. So we pretty much hear a comment from one of our, all of our divisions every other Monday night here when they come here to talk to us. If they're not, we have a lot of requests for service. We probably have probably 20 to 30 requests for service each week through email or phone calls that come through Rochelle, who's probably still hiding back there, or through our program out at the Public Works Ops Department. So we have a lot of those. We have a new system that we have implemented, an electronic system that we can actually bring those calls in and send them out to individuals and make sure they're taken care of. So we're being responsive. It seemed like during COVID, some of those were getting lost in the shuffle. People weren't here. People were working from home. But we seem to have corrected that now, so we can stand on top of them. So, yeah. What else? Yeah. Utilities, we do. Traffic signals, that's us. If it's power, it's PG&E, so we'll coordinate with them. But if it's any type of traffic signal or streetlights, that would be us. You bet. Good question. What else can I help with? Okay, thank you for your time.
Okay, good evening. My name is Adam Henig, Recreation Manager, and I'm going to talk to you about the Recreation Division. So the Gilroy Recreation Division receives one and a half million dollar investment from the general fund. We have five full-time staff dedicated to providing recreation services and more than a dozen part-time employees to support our efforts. The goal of the Recreation Division is to offer services that improve the lives of our residents through health, wellness, and enrichment. Excellent. We've come a long way since the height of the pandemic, when recreation was supporting the Santa Clara County Public Health Department's mass vaccination efforts. Today, recreation is focused on doing what it does best, which is to provide programs to the community. Every day, we serve between 80 to 100 seniors at the senior center. Over the past 12 months, our fee-based classes and our free programs have had more than 5,000 participants, all ages, all interests, and all income levels. Our high enrollment numbers are partly due to the ease of our new registration software. Before the pandemic, we only received about a quarter of our participants registering online. Now, as you can see, it's more than three quarters. In addition, for the first time since 2019, we reopened the Christopher High School Aquatic Center with the assistance of a third-party provider. Next slide. Some of our biggest challenges that we're facing are, and you've heard this throughout all of these slideshows so far, are aging facilities. We're operating in facilities, some of which are as old as, overbuilt in 1940 and don't have an HVAC, but we make it work. Also, you've heard this as well, hiring staff. There is an extreme labor shortage, especially with entry-level workers. We've also had difficulty recruiting independent contractors to teach classes and help us expand our offerings. And lastly, keeping our staff and contractors COVID-free. So it disrupts our programming and makes life very challenging. And that's it from me. If you have any questions, my contact information is up there. Well, you know what? It's like renting a picnic area. There is no difference. The cost is obviously going to be a little bit more than renting a picnic area. We just did a user fee analysis, and so I believe the costs did go up a little bit. But we don't receive a lot of requests for use. Typically, it's usually a church group or it's a theater group that wants to do some sort of performance. You know, I don't know off the top of my head. There are different tier levels. So if you're a nonprofit, it's lower than if you're a resident. And then if you're a resident, you're paying less than a non-resident. There are. There are. And as I mentioned, part of the challenge is staffing, whether it's done in-house, so with our own city employees, just running a traditional day camp or running a year-round preschool. Those are difficult to do right now. It's not because of funding, it's just finding staff. We've had some vacancies that have been going on for almost a year now. And then on the flip side, we try to look to find a contractor to try to offer those types of services. We've been fortunate to find recently a new hip-hop instructor. Basketball, obviously, is very popular right now with the Warriors. And we're looking actually at even working with a violin teacher to teach violin. So we're really open to pretty much everything. It's not just for youth, it's also for adults, it's for seniors. It's for those with special needs as well. Yes, so pre-pandemic, we did have a softball league. It was co-ed. It was women's, it was men's. And then after the pandemic, we were able to work with a resident who actually is able to provide that service on his own. We rent him the fields, and then he runs the league. And if you or know someone who's interested, I can put you in contact with him. Okay. Yeah. Anything else? All right. Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you, everybody. I think it's very interesting that the theme seems to be our recruitment and retention. And there was the question about, like, what can you do? It's a math issue. When you have a workforce that's retiring and almost your entire executive team, including myself, are eligible for retirement. I mean, we could all be gone very shortly. There's not people behind us just from a numbers standpoint. So the baby boomer generation, extremely large population group, the one following, it's much smaller. So just from a pure mathematical sense, there's just not people looking for the jobs that we're offering. And so you say, well, what if you pay more? What if you do that? You can look at the highest-paying city in the area, they have the same problems. So it's not just pay and benefits. It's a lot of factors, and it's attracting people to local government, I think, is a bigger issue. So regardless, you're going to hear about this for the next decade, because it's not going away. And we really, we found through COVID that a lot of people aren't re-entering the workforce, which I don't know what the hell they're doing, but it's a challenge that every city's having, every state government, federal government is having. And it's just a numbers issue. Okay, so I'll give you a quick summary, and then we'll have a minute or so if you have any additional questions. But overcoming the challenges, continuation of achieving a new normal post-pandemic. Those of you who worked in organizations or whatever, you go back after COVID, it's not the same. It'll never be the same. It's much different, the way we interact, the way we talk to our customers, our residents, our business folks is completely different. And I think it's probably here to stay. The challenge are present, but it's sort of the opportunities, as you saw, Adam, getting, going from 27% of online registration to 75 or something, 80, is much easier for folks to engage in those programs. And we're also seeing that in utility billing, where we really were one of the lower-utilized online communities. And we've seen that number go up. And so we're able to learn from COVID and take advantage of some of the ways that people are now willing to accept those services. Really, when you talk about expansion and programs like that, we're a very lean city. And I can tell you, I've worked four or five cities, and by population, by per capita, whatever number you want to throw out, we're small staff. And so we focus on providing essential services. And I heard the question about priorities. Our priority is health and safety first. Once we build on top of that, we do quality of life, we do other services. But really, at the end of the day, our baseline is health and safety and providing a safe community for everybody. Staffing and broader supply shortages will continue to be a challenge in the near-term future. I think we've kind of beaten that one down. It's just what it is. And then technology improvements help maintain services despite staffing challenges. I think one of the most, I've been in the organization now for six years, one thing I'm most proud of, of myself, our staff, our council, is just how we've said, well, if we don't have the people to do it, what can we do to do it better? And we've all embraced technology, including some of us who just really don't want to learn how to do certain things technology-wise. We've had to. We've had no choice. And so we've adapted. So I'm really proud of the organization for that. And then continuing to deliver new projects and programs in spite of COVID. And we have 100 excuses of why not to do things. We're building a lot of stuff out there, and we're tearing up things and tearing up roads. 10th and Chestnut is getting the bulldozer right now, and man, that's exciting. And that's the stuff as community members they want to see, and we love doing. So we're still finding ways to build new things. And then increases in economic development, housing and infrastructure activity within the community. We're going to spend a lot of time with our council and the CIP and talking about these things. Again, getting the next generation, I always say that a lot of the projects we're doing started way back in the Jay Baxa days, when Jay was here forever. And so I give him and Tom and Gabe a lot of credit for getting that thing ready for us, and we were able to do it. And I hope to do that to the next people who come after me, to provide them a good footing to build some stuff, too. And then I think I hope that you notice from our group, we're a very positive group. If you're negative-minded, you will not survive on this executive team, because we have lots of reasons to be negative, and they're all out there. And so we love our jobs, and we love this community, and we don't have to motivate people, exactly, especially with this group. They're self-motivated. They love this town, and they're very positive. And so we hope that you saw that tonight. So that concludes the former part. We'll take, any more questions that our candidates have, if there are any? Yes, thank you for joining us for a couple hours. If you have any follow-up questions or whatever, you can send those to me. I'll get the answer, and then I'll send it out to everybody, because it's very important to us that all candidates feel they have access to the same information, the same answers. And so if you need some help or are curious about something, just hit me up, and we'll get you an answer, and we'll share it with everybody. So, okay, well, good luck to all of you. Thank you for attending. And thank you for the, we were up to 12 people, which is a record for us for this type of event. But I do appreciate the public being interested as well. So have a good night.